Order, we do have a forum. Any citizen comments? Okay, we have two sets of minutes to approve. So let's start with a year ago, you guys remember a year ago, April 13th, 2020, you have minutes in front of you. Any questions or comments on those? I will make a motion to approve the minutes of April 13th, 2020.
Second. Yes. Did, did you say you'll make a motion or you're looking for motion?
I make a motion.
And I second that motion.
We roll call Erin Kelly.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Ryan, aye. And then the minutes from last Monday, March 1st, 2021. Any questions or comments on those?
Nope.
Then I will make a motion to approve the minutes of March 1st, 2021.
Second.
For Jackie.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Ryan, aye. Carrie. Okay, we are going to go through, um, continue on with our fiscal year 2021 review combined with fiscal year 2022 budget presentation of a few funds. Ms. Lyons.
All right, I'm going to share my screen so that everybody can follow along. Um.
What page are you starting?
I'm going to start, this is page five of the packet. So.
I can't see them.
Okay, yep, we have the garbage fund in, in front of us here, so, um, I will, as Christine said, go over the projected 21 results.
Yeah, why don't you get over there?
Yeah. Somewhere where you can see better things.
The ones are.
No one on this.
Hey Laura. There's a tag.
Oh, thank you.
There's an extra one and I don't need it if I want.
Okay.
It's a page one.
Thank you. Um, so the garbage fund is an enterprise fund and, um, as you know, we collect garbage fees, um, the utility bills and then pay waste management for their services. Um, also charged to this account is the associated postage and printing of bills. So this year to date, um, we're projecting that we will head, uh, and ahead of budget. This is kind of a timing situation, um, both as far as accounts receivable as well as, um, uh, the timing of our bills being only, uh, on a bimonthly cycle. So, um, fiscal year 21, we're projected at with a positive fund balance or positive, uh, results, revenue in excesses of expenses of $38,900. And then, um, with respect to fiscal year 22, um, Erin will be having a village services meeting later this week. However, um, we do have some preliminary numbers for the new garbage contracts. So I just kind of plugged those in and, and went from there. Um, so not to give away the secrets, but, um, garbage fees are expected to increase. So they're, they're going to negotiate that as well as, um, make other considerations. So, um, essentially when, when timing is removed, we expect to have, uh, positive results of $3. And I will be asking to transfer, um, for administrative services to cover, um, both use of the accounting software and the personnel to, to issue the bills. Any questions about the garbage fund? Okay.
So we're expecting a 45% increase in our garbage.
That's, that's one of the, that's the initial estimation from waste management. That's why we're having a meeting with village services to talk about the next steps and recommendations to the village board about whether we go to bid or not. A lot of that is driven off of recycling, uh, is from what waste management was talking about and the increased cost of waste of recycling. And they've offered suggestions, which I'm not sure that I'm a big fan of personally, but I need to take it to the village services committee. Uh, one note on that, I did miss the deadline to have the agenda posted within 48 hours. So, um, Lori, it may be delayed by one week to have that meeting.
Okay.
Um, but, but yes, Jeff, to answer your question, the increase is substantial and most of it is to the recycling program. Sorry, I shouldn't say program, recycling, uh, services, not the at your door service, but the actual picking up of recycling on a weekly basis.
All right, um, seeing there are no other questions, I'm moving on to the water construction fund. This fund is, uh, collapsed with the water fund and, um, is used to record tap on fees. At the present time, we are only collecting commercial tap on fees. So, um, that's based on the water meter size, um, the connection that's made to the, to the main. So this is completely an estimate, um, that includes two three inch water service connections, just a kind of a guess. Um, so that's what we have in for fiscal year 22. In 21, um, we actually did receive a tap on fee since we started, um, our budget analysis. And that was for the BEK project in Flanagan. So we will end up with, um, at least one tap on fee for fiscal year 21. And then there is $75,000 in here as well for fiscal year 21. That is related to, um, the well number nine project that was completed years ago. The Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity finally decided to reallocate the funds for that project. And so we were essentially reimbursed $75,000. So that money was placed into this fund, um, and, uh, we've kind of quote squirreled that away for our water connection, um, when we do the north and south water main connections. So this funding actually has a negative fund balance and tell it's rolled up with the, with the water fund. So don't be concerned about that because I have not rolled those all together to provide you with what the water fund's fund balance is. So any questions about fund 34? All right, we're going to move on to the sewer construction fund. Um, this too relates to connection, um, fees or tap ons to main. Uh, this is again two commercial tap ons. Um, and then we will have revenue for fiscal year 21 when we finalize the year. So this project or this, excuse me, this fund again ends up with a negative fund balance and tell it's rolled up into the sewer operating fund. So, um, this gives you the results of that, however, don't be concerned because I will be rolling that up to and providing you with the sewer fund ending fund analysis. Any questions about that? All right. Um, this is another sewer construction fund. This has a little bit of cash in it. This fund, um, dates back to the wastewater treatment, um, expansion. So it has $7,929. Um, we're expecting to end the year with that. So again, this gets rolled up into the sewer fund, um, fund balance. Unfortunately, it's not, um, quite offsetting to the other construction. Close.
We could. Could we double the field and trails budget with that money?
There we go. Um, the next fund that I'm going to, uh, present is the police pension fund. So as you know, um, this receives officer and employer contributions and then we pay the pension funds out of this as well as administrative funds. We did have, um, in fiscal year 21, a few refund of contributions. This would have been either for, from, um, somebody that left the fund and rolled their money over or they, um, left the fund going to another police pension employer and therefore the funds were transferred. Um, we don't really budget for that other than the funds that we know are in for officers that are no longer in the fund. So if you see in fiscal year 22, the village holds, um, $18,928 from an officer that, um, those funds are ineligible to roll over into another police pension fund. So they will either have to be just withdrawn or rolled into, um, a qualified plan such as an IRA. Um, we do have a little bit of an increase over budget, uh, in fiscal year 22 for contractual services. Um, and that's due to having to renegotiate, uh, the actuarial calculations that are done each year. Um, one other thing that of note is the fact that our pension payments were very much over budget this fiscal year. And that's due to, um, our single retiree that's receiving benefits received a retroactive pension fund payment because of being moved from tier two to tier one. So we caught up, um, all of the prior pension payments and restated those at tier one and he received a, a payment out for that. So this fund, um, also reflects the employer contribution of 647,000 that we show in the general fund budget, um, as an employer contribution to the fund. So we expect revenue in excess of expenses for fiscal year 22 of 690,000 and change with an ending fund balance of just over 3,222. Um, these funds will, for the most part, probably be sent downstate. I'm guessing not for a whole nother year. So, uh, they have the police pension fund, the downstate police pension fund has organized their board of trustees, um, but they need to hire, um, a fiduciary and those types of, uh, people to help them with their investments. So I really don't expect the funds to, to leave the villages, um, here, if you will, um, until a year from the summer.
Does the current fund have an actuary and then, at all?
They do, yes.
Because the investment earnings.
So.
Of 13, two, uh, that's about the equivalent to a savings account.
And, and that's exactly right, um, because until the fund reached 2.5 million, which it's not, you know, it's going to reach that by the end of the year, we expect, um, it could only invest 10% in equities. So there really was not, no other vehicle other than maybe a certificate of deposit, but those aren't earning anything, any, anything right now in there. So, um, it is in a money market account and it's, um, it's not earning very much money, so.
So, sorry, Lori, can you explain this to me? I thought we had, we had to change our pension and that the state was managing it and they pooled all the money to invest into and they managed the investment. And by pooling all the money, it made it to where we could go into those investments that would garner a higher percentage, you know, not complete risk, but higher than a savings account. But what I'm hearing it sounds like is we haven't sent anything downstate. We hold it, it's in a money market and we're funding it ourselves until the state says they're ready to take it. So we're losing out on investment until then?
That's, that's accurate. That, that would be an accurate statement. I expect the funds to be requested by the state probably next summer.
And in the law, there was no timeline provided of when the state would take over these funds, just that we had to set it aside? Or I'm trying to understand what the law that the state had that resulted in us leaving IMRF and having to do this separate fund, which has now caused issues for the next, what do we say, till 2040?
Right, yes, and beyond actually, because that's only 90% for funded at 2040. Um, so, yes, uh, this, the state statutes go back a long time ago, but, um, because in the 2010 census, the village exceeded 5,000 people. That was the trigger to establish a police pension fund. So it took a while to organize, um, but as of May 1, 2012, the police pension fund was established. And that's when the village started funding the police pension fund. Shortly after that, we received the officers IMRF contributions. And, you know, to this point, um, we've received about $300,000 in prior IMRF officer contributions plus their current contributions and the village contributions have led to the balance that we have right now.
And who set up the law or the rule for the blistering investment return?
Um, that, that goes way back also, the, the limitations on what you could invest in.
Can that be changed or no?
Uh, it's a state statute, so.
Well, once they take the money though, that's the whole purpose of, right, invest in it.
Yep.
When, when was it passed or when was the law passed, Lori, that the state would take those funds? Like this 3.2 million at the end of fiscal 22, while we have it in our fund and it's cash on hand, we have to eventually cut 100% of that as a check to the state for our portion of the pension, correct?
It won't be quite 100% because we will still be responsible for, um, all the administrative costs as well as the current pension distributions.
But that law was.
And that law was passed in Janu-, uh, well, it became effective January 20 something, 2020. So they, they changed, um. Actually, actually, it might've passed a little bit before that, but I'm sorry, the January 2020 was changing from tier two to tier one.
They're actually paying an actuary to, to do this.
The actuary is the one that tells us what our contribution is required. They take our, um, expected salary increases, our current, um, the age of the officers, their life expectancy, and they calculate what the village needs to contribute to make sure that we're 90% funded by 2040. So they're not doing the investing for us.
Right, no, I get that.
Yep. Any additional questions on this? Now we're going to go through the special revenue funds. Our first special revenue fund is the TIF fund. Um, so I estimated the property taxes, um, for 2022 and we have the actual property taxes recorded for 2021. I'm really not sure, I don't have a lot of information other than the EAV with respect to, um, the TIF funds. So this is, 22 is definitely an estimate and will be updated if we get the extension numbers prior to passing the budget. Um, but, uh, this fund has a bond which, uh, funded the improvements along State Street at Kai's Industrial and Mill Avenues. And so, um, unfortunately, the TIF increment is not sufficient to make the bond payments and pay the administrative expenses of the fund. So we're transferring from public use to this fund to, um, make sure we end up in the positive. And, um, with a $25,000 transfer, we expect to end in 22 with $8,857 to the positive. But so this is the last, um, the last bond payment for this fund is in, I believe, 2029. Um, and the bond payments are going up. So, uh, we have two years of about 60,000 or so in bond payments and then the payments will be going up, so.
About double, right?
Yes. Any questions on the TIF? All right. Moving on to Hotel Motel. Um, the tax receipts for this are down quite a bit. Um, so it's been kind of all over the board with respect to, um, the hotel tax. Right now we're running around a thousand dollars a month. So that's what I have projected for fiscal year 22. Um, I am hoping that, uh, it'll come out to be what we're actually projecting for fiscal year 21. But, um, that being said, we did not have, uh, the Coon Creek, uh, activity this year. So we did not provide them with a contribution. Uh, the $20,000 that's in other contractual services from fiscal year 21 is the A5, um, branding project. And then for fiscal year 22, um, Coon Creek asked for $35,000. And, um, clearly our request for funding is exceeding our revenue. So, uh, I did put $25,000 in there. I'm looking for finance committee and board recommendations with respect to that. Um, the $25,000 would be supplemented, um, with advertising that the village does for the, um, on the radios. Um, so that is $4,000, um, down in the other contractual services. So total Coon Creek proposed spending would be $29,000. Um, the chamber has asked to have their same $6,000 contribution that they received this current year. I do have their grant reports, which we will be sharing, um, at the next board meeting. So you can see how they've, um, how they've spent the money that, uh, the village has helped them with. And then, um, down in the other contractual services, we have some additional A5 funding for, um, additional, uh, marketing and other promotional initiatives.
Can you think back on Coon Creek? Have we only, we've only given them what?
10. 16 was, was the budget for last year.
They want more than double now?
And they didn't expend any money?
Well, they, we didn't give them the check either. So we budgeted 16, but we didn't give them anything because there was no concrete days. Um, the other thing we need to consider, and I brought this up in a village meeting as well and a general board meeting, is that outside of this 25K, part of our contract with waste management, I thought they were donating the waste and, and porta potties and all of that for concrete days. No, the village pays for that. So all of this, all of the refuse and recycling and porta jons and all of the services that Coon Creek gets from waste management actually comes out of the village. So we need, we should consider that as part of the in-kind donations that we're giving to them.
And, and Erin, so you know, your predecessor told us that it was all rolled in part of the package with, uh, waste management, that they were giving it to us as a, a bonus, no charge.
So that's, that's half correct. It's rolled in and that it's in the contract that they provide services for it. It's not correct that we don't pay for it. And Vaughn did verify with Jay and I that we paid for those, that service. We also pay for the street dance and we're paying for every other, um, taxing organization that gets trash services from us.
And just for the record, that's all passed through to residents and their billing. So that, the village is zero.
Right, but it is included in the overall cost to the residents of this village. It's not like it's free and waste management's donating it.
How about that, didn't we have a porta potty at Tuscany Park for years?
Three, three or four, but we were told that they were donating it, uh, to keep the contract, uh, and the village happy, that all that was donated. In fact, the, the street sweepers after Coon Creek came, uh, from waste management and we were told that that was free as well.
That's included in part of the contract, as Jay said, it's free to the village in that the village doesn't cut them a check. The residents are, are passed on that fee per the last contract that was signed. So part of the fee that you pay every two months for water and sewer and trash, that trash portion is covering, part of it goes to cover the cost at Coon Creek, part of the street sweeper cost at Coon Creek, part of the township and the fire department, everybody else who we have trash with, as well as the street dance and any of those others that we thought were donated. The village doesn't pay a check to waste management, the residents are passing some of that cost on.
So out of curiosity, did they give us a reason why they, they want 35,000? Was there, what's the justification for the substantial? Cause I remember 10,000 when I first started as, uh, as a donation early and, and then, uh, and there was an increase, I thought, like you said, to last year. What, why do they need so much money? Out of curiosity, did they say?
They, in their funding letter, they requested additional money stating that, um, they had lost some sponsorships. And so, um, both, um, to kind of fill that in as well as give them, um, starting money, they were requesting additional funding.
Didn't we just tell them?
Being on there for seven years, I can tell you, they probably got 40 or 50K in the bank right now. And, uh, the sponsorships they get are year to year. I mean, everything they collect this year from sponsors, they spend this year. So they collected sponsor money last year, cause like Dan Ben listing, yeah, they, they give 1,500 or 2,500 every year, no matter what. We didn't even send them a letter, they just sent it. Right. So he got revenue in last year, even though there wasn't a Coon Creek.
And I can say they lost sponsorships because they haven't even sent out the sponsorship forms yet.
They haven't.
I think he said he was concerned that he wouldn't lose sponsors. I don't.
Concerned by electric bills.
Probably a hard sell for the residents considering everybody's cutting back because of COVID and everything else. And then we're going to up our donation.
But I will say for the record, this board has been told for many years that waste management donated those, the dumpsters, the porta potties, the street sweepers. Uh, everybody was told that they were donated. So we, well, until right now, that the residents are paying.
Yeah, I, I'm not, that wasn't to pass blame or anything. That was just to say that there is, there is an in-kind, that's what I had brought up at one of the general meetings is when we look at how we donate to Coon Creek or the chamber, because you know, we have the street dance we also do, that, um, or the holiday on state that we, we worked with, that while the village isn't paying directly, there is some type of cost associated with it. And that was news to Jay and I as well. So I, I don't think that, that, that this is a, um, I don't think it's any different. I don't, I don't know that the, the board was misrepresented or was given bad information and that the village directly themselves aren't paying for it. It, it was presented as it's being, it's a passed on cost to the residents. But to, to Ryan's point, um, 20, like, like just a couple of years ago was 10. Last year it was upgraded to 16 because we had some extra motor fuel tax, I think was the conversation around. Like we've all appeared to upgrade. Now it's 25 and I, I gotta be honest, I love their enthusiasm, but are we even sure that the state's going to allow the festival this year?
Like, are, are we even sure that the state's going to even issue the liquor license?
No, no, we don't know that they'll issue the liquor license.
Because that's what's going to hold it up, right? Whether or not the state is going to allow it or not, how they're going to enforce one thing or another. It's the state's, the liquor license, if they can't sell booze, they're not going to make any money.
Right.
We participated in a survey today, um, community's asking about 4th of July celebrations. So we might get some information back on that in the next couple of weeks, but what other communities are planning?
We'll know as soon as Chicago says that blues faster, when, if they start having fasts, then they, then we'll get, we'll be able to get the liquor license.
What is the total, does, I mean, I, Mike and Toby, you both sit on that board or have been involved. Do we know, uh, at least I know you're involved, I don't know if you sit on the boards, but what is the total expense of Coon Creek? What, what is their total, I know it's significant, but does anyone have an idea of what that number is?
This is here.
How much?
50, five zero.
Wow, more than that.
Well, you gotta understand, the bands, you know, the bands are anywhere from 15 to 2,500. And then we also have to write a residual check to, uh, Nashville for the music association for the bands to sing the songs.
Hmm.
Yeah. So it costs about 50, but he takes in, he takes in 50.
Right, I would imagine Coon Creek's at least.
Right, I would imagine Coon Creek's, at least, you know, their goal would be to, I mean, they're not a money, you know, not a profit center, so they wanna break even, I would think. It it would have some available for startup next year. Um, I don't know, I I just, that seems like an awfully large amount without really substantive justification for it, in my opinion.
Um, for those that have been on the board for a while, wasn't the village's contribution to Coon Creek, like, we sponsored the fireworks? Wasn't that why it was ten K or close to that? Because. It was to cover like the Mad Bomber cost.
Historically, it had been about ten to twelve thousand.
Ten less than the up to radio.
Right, then we got into the advertising.
Yeah.
And then last year, there was a a uptick in firework cost. So we gave a little more to offset the increase in the, in the actual firework purchase.
I just don't know how we can go say, hey, everybody cut back, times are tough, we know you're not working this, and the other thing, okay, and then, hey, let's give Coon Creek more money. Not, I I enjoy Coon Creek, I think that they would work, but I just don't know how we can. Justify it, even though it's a restricted fund, because we talk about that all the time too, right? Like, there's only so many things that we can spend out of this fund.
Correct. So Aaron, what do you think is a more appropriate amount?
Well, I, so um, I I do have one question because we're looking at. A a big deficit spend in the budget if we're only budgeting twelve K for a hotel motel tax. I see that that's the same amount we budgeted for this past year, but we're projecting almost double, and knowing that the travel and hospitality industry is significantly hit and we have one hotel, how are we budget, how are we figuring that? We're gonna end the year with. Twelve thousand more than where we were at at eight months and almost double what we budgeted for the year. Like, how are we bringing in so much tax from one hotel?
Um, I'll, I honestly need to look at that number because when I look at the eight months compared to, you know, like I said, we're bringing in about a thousand dollars. Um, each month recently, so I I need to look at that projected number because it might not actually be that high. I mean, if we had nine, ninety six hundred at eight months and are bringing in a thousand dollars, you know, for the final four months. Yeah, it it it'll be, yeah, maybe.
The twelve thousand.
Yeah.
The current projected year is probably incorrect, but the, but the budget for next year, the twelve thousand is the real number. And that's.
The only reason why I ask that too, and Christine, to your question, is if we're really gonna bring in, let's say thirteen, not twenty one, and it's an eight thousand dollar difference. Then our estimated fund balance at the end of FY twenty two is actually nineteen thousand nine hundred, not twenty seven thousand nine hundred, if we allocate all of that spending as it is here. Because we go into next year with eight thousand less than what we project, which is the sixty five, right? So to to that point, um Christine, I. And no, and seeing that we're budgeting twelve K, if if you ask me what I think the right number is, we we were gonna do sixteen last year. Do we do sixteen this year? Do we do ten this year? I think we need to understand the scale to which they're looking to, the impact, like, I would like to understand their ask. So what's the impact of the sponsors? What what is their, they talked about, we're gonna come back big. What did come back big mean? Sixteen is almost. Oh, it's six thousand more, four thousand more than the historical, plus we do advertising on the radio.
Uh, we pay for the advertising, Mike, or is that?
We do.
We do.
So on top of sixteen.
Right, and I think that's where we came up with sixteen numbers. We said that we were gonna give them twenty, but rather than give them the twenty, we take four back to do the advertising. I still think that we ended up on the wrong side of that because I think with some of the advertising we did toward the end, I think we were over the board. If I, if I remember correctly. Because they offered some digital package or something that we wanted to try. So I think we ended up, I think last year, they're not last year, year prior, they were over their twenty thousand.
And Lori, do you have at your fingertips what we did the year before? Was it twelve or was it sixteen the year before?
It's probably twelve because we added in the, we added in the second radio station that second year where we did that.
So then. Christine, Christine, based on, and I would love to hear trustee Krajecchi's feedback as well. My recommendation would be that we keep it consistent with what we had. Budgeted for this previous fiscal year at the sixteen, if that was already an increase. From the year before that, hey, we know you didn't do it, we increased it, we wanna keep the increase we had promised this year. But another nine on top of what we just increased, so like three years of. More than doubling what we would have given, plus the radio, just seems. Seems like a lot for one, one of the things, but trustee Krajecchi, I defer to you on your opinion as well.
Yeah, I I think something like this, there's a principal problem I have too, in a sense that, you know, a fest like this should, I mean, part of what is nice about a fest like this is we bring people from outside. Um, and they should help sort of pay for this through their purchases. Um, if we, I just feel, I fear if we start to tilt too far towards public funding. Um, yeah, I, you know, you sort of lose some of the, I I don't know, it it I don't, it doesn't seem like me, to me, that there's a realistic justification for such a significant increase when. The fest has been in operation um without any, at least, even according to what uh trustee Colt had said, with their fund balance again, and I'll allow them to sort of confirm or deny that number, but. Um, it doesn't appear that anything significant has changed outside of COVID not having it last year that would justify such a a large increase and a tilt towards public funding. On something that I think really should sort of be a self-funding mechanism. Uh, I I know I have a problem contributing because it is a great event. And I think it's the signature event for, you know, the town. But I I just, I would grow concerned with, you know, I I don't think the people of Hampshire need to be paying such a large amount, specifically those people who choose not to attend. So I I I'm with the maintaining the current level of funding personally.
That's to the right, Tom. Committee for applause is thirty five. Keep Lori voting for one time.
Um, I agree with both of you. I think the festival didn't go on, so. I think it should just stay at the sixteen thousand, not increase.
I can tell you what Carl does. He sends out about a hundred and fifty requests for donations. He know, he doesn't know what he's gonna get back. He has no idea. And then he starts answering them. And he's probably sending them out now. So he has no idea. He's expecting it's gonna be a lot less because of the, of the economy.
But sixteen with four for advertising or sixteen?
So I I have the results from fiscal year twenty. So we did spend the sixteen thousand dollars and then the village spent six thousand and sixteen dollars on advertising.
And then we went over. That's way too much. I think we should stick with sixteen and then really try to commit to stay at the four if we do the advertising. And then try to keep it as close to our twenty and then this way, you know, we can totally cut back. But, you know, or not be the advertising on radio at all, you know?
Hard to, it's hard to judge, like, what kind of impact.
Yeah.
Well, I I think it'd be nice if they um. If they came with such a large request, if they came with some kind of financial statement that showed that. This large request isn't fifty percent of their budgeted total budget, right? If they came back and said, hey, we're trying to go big, it's a hundred K, we're trying to. We estimate on a spend, that's why we're asking for a a larger donation. I I'd be willing to have a conversation, but not having any background on what their budget is or. What this percentage is. I agree with trustee Krajecchi too, that we shouldn't be funding fifty percent of the festival. We should really help out, but if. If this is fifty percent, that just seems like, it seems like a lot from one organization for the festival, regardless of who's giving.
We go back to just saying we're gonna pay for the.
Ooh, the fireworks are.
No, no, I I understand that, but that's what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, is that that's all you're gonna use our money for is paying for the fireworks, and that's gonna be our contribution. You're not gonna be able to use it for whatever you want it, because I think, right, Mary, that's what you said in the past, that we used to just do fireworks and that's it. And then they had a problem with us saying. That they could, you could just use it on the fireworks, and so we said, okay, well, you can use it whatever you want.
No, I mean, we we said that we would cover the cost of fireworks. They, they actually use our funds to pay the fireworks, just throw it in their bucket and. You know, distribute it out, but we. Covered their funds for the fireworks.
Better PR, we can say that we pay for something specific.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And that also meets the criteria of bringing other people from outside the village into. Encouraging outside visitors. So we agree that twenty thousand, however it's disseminated, is where we wanna stay?
I would think so.
Yeah, I think that's fair. Is that? Lori, is part of that under the nineteen thousand for other contractual services?
Yes, that includes additional A five initiatives, fifteen thousand dollars for that.
Okay, so four thousand of the nineteen is the the note for advertising Coon Creek?
Eric, can we get a figure from Vaughn on how much?
Yes, I agree. Because we should, yeah, we should add that, at least let them know that we are paying for that as well, so. I, I agree, I think that's where you're going.
You guys said Coon Creek has absolutely no idea that we're paying for any waste. Removal or the out house, because we were told it was all three. So they have no idea.
Yeah, I can ask for a breakdown of that. He may have given it to us. Let me look back at some of the documents. Jay, I don't remember, or if you, you may remember, I don't, if he gave it to us, but I, I will get that number.
Yeah, he gave it to us. I can provide it either way, but I also think we might be able to negotiate something better this time.
All right, so I'll roll that back to twenty thousand dollars in total, so we'll change that back to sixteen um up in the Coon Creek line and leave the four down in the advertising line. Okay. All right, any additional questions or comments about hotel motel tax? Now we're moving on to road and bridge. Uh, this fund is uh the result of the village paving over township roads, so when the. The road commissioner does his tax levy, we get a portion of that added to our real estate taxes. Um, I guess at this number, I will be adjusting this uh if we get the extension in time. I really have no idea. Last year we did see a bit of a bump, uh, or this current year, we're seeing a bit of a bump in that uh we did annex the property. North of the Pet Ag building, so the Wind Mayor portion, the northern part of Wind Mayor Road, and so therefore we did see a bump in our property taxes there. So the one oh nine is probably a little bit low, but I, when Josh asked me about funding in the road and bridge, I said, just count on getting about a hundred thousand dollars. So the one oh nine is consistent with this current year budget. Um, we also do receive some personal property replacement tax from the township. And um that's an apportionment that they do for us. Uh, that is included in this year's budget. I never budget for that. It's just a nominal amount, so we add that to the road and bridge fund here. We did not uh expend any money for construction this current year due to being on the austerity program. So we're kind of doubling up our expenses for next year, and at the present time, um Dave has a list of uh priorities. And I'm not going to tell you exactly what we're gonna spend that money on this year because. Um, because State Street is gonna be shut down and we're changing our parking spots and all that kind of good stuff. He's kind of reprioritized again. Um, if we can use road and bridge money to repave the municipal parking lots, we wanna do that very first. So um I've got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there. Um, with the parking lots probably being the the top priority, but that's kind of what I'll consider a non-traditional paving project. And uh the township code. Um, calls for us to spend the money that they give to us on very specific things. And um so if we can use it for the parking lots, we will. Um, if not, we probably will go possibly to the Duchess Lane repaving. Um, that does have a component of uh sewer replacement in it as well, so that's gonna kind of um snowball, if you will. That will not be eligible for road and bridge. Um, and then uh Julie Tarwilliger's on the list and uh Prairie Julie Lane's on the list, so we've got a bunch of priorities. We're gonna spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars one way or the other. Um, any questions about that? If we don't spend or at least um have our list of identified projects, the township can ask for their money back, so. Um, we, our list of projects well exceeds um the fund balance and the receipts expected for next year. Any questions? All right, we'll move on to the motor fuel tax area. Um, we're actually receiving four different types of motor fuel tax. The original motor fuel tax, you'll remember that motor fuel tax went up, I believe it was in July last year. Um, so there's two components of true motor fuel tax money. Uh, the village receives or has received in the past. Um, some grant funds from being identified as a high-growth city. And then we're also receiving uh Rebuild Illinois funding. So in this current fiscal year, we have uh the traditional motor fuel tax distribution in at one ninety seven, two oh eight. That is a per capita amount, and we use the I M L um estimates for for that. Uh, we did receive a high-growth cities grant in the amount of twenty six thousand, one forty five, so that's in there. Um, we're not budgeting for that in fiscal year twenty two. It's really unclear if those uh dollars will be available in fiscal year twenty two to the village or not. And then in the other grant section, that's actually six, no, that's uh. All the installments of Rebuild Illinois included in there. We actually will receive only one hundred and twenty two thousand dollars. Today I learned from I dot that we cannot, what I'll call, pre-spend those monies, so we were kind of hoping to use. A hundred percent of Rebuild Illinois for the intersection eligible intersection improvements at seventy two and State Street. And they will not let us do that. We can only expend the installments that we have received in the door.
We can't spend the money that the Illinois, that Illinois gave us for a project that Illinois is telling us that we have to pay for.
Yes.
Because the project, Illinois has decided not to do that project until later.
Yes, so. Right.
To clarify.
Yeah, keep their money and can't spend their money on their project because they delayed their project.
Right, we we had um. We expect to get three hundred and sixty six thousand dollars and change from from that particular grant, and we had hoped to spend.
Over what timeline?
Over a three-year period. Um. So we're getting two installments each fiscal year. That's our expectations. So by the time we're done with the construction project down at the corner. We expect, expect to now have four installments in the door, so we should have two hundred and, or yeah, two hundred and forty four thousand. And change in the door. So you'll notice that in the construction line item, I have three hundred and twenty four, six thirty five. We will only be able to expend whatever we have in the door after all the payments are made um for the. Out of the Rebuild Illinois, so the rest of it's gonna just have to come from regular, I'll call it regular motor fuel tax. So we'll still spend the three twenty four, it's just we were kind of hoping to, um, Rebuild Illinois has a more restrictive. Use of the funds, so like for road repairs, it has to be reconstruction. Like, not just a repaving situation, it has to be complete reconstruction of the roads, or at least to meet, what is it, Josh?
Thirteen years.
Thirteen years uh life standard, so um. That that does restrict the money, so we'll have to find another paving project that we can um use that money. But down here at the bottom, when I say that uh Rebuild Illinois is three sixty, three sixty six, and then we expect to spend. Three twenty four, that's changed today. I will update this before I present the preliminary budget to show that. Um, of that three twenty four, some of it's gonna be regular motor fuel tax and other will be this, the other piece will be the.
Lori, can you scroll up again, please?
Yes.
So I, is the long-term, outside of the rebuild in Illinois and the state of seventy two, if I look at recurring expenses, is the idea to have street salaries and benefits from now on? After, including this next fiscal year and then going forward to come out of this fund?
So at this point in time, I have done a cash flow for five years, no, five years, four years, for the capital improvement funds only. So until I'm able to do that village-wide, I can't really tell you where we're going to be with street salaries. In our minds, we'd like to only charge $100,000 to motor fuel tax. But we're clearly plugging, nearly plugging the pension hole, if you will, using motor fuel tax to fund street salaries.
Well, here, here's the reason why I ask. If I look at this, and let's say that we do this for the next five years, take the whole State '72 project off and the Rebuild Illinois fund out, right? Or grant out. Our income is 409,000 is estimated. Our expenses that would be recurring is 725, $726,430. That is wages and benefits, and that is $250,000 commodity for ice control. That includes nothing for contractual services for construction or maintenance. So we are budgeting, if we do that, ongoing 300 and, let's call it $316,000 deficit go forward in this fund. That's why I'm asking if this is a one-time or an ongoing strategy, because we would be budgeting a deficit in this fund if we said just those two things, salaries and ice control, continued to come out of this motor fuel fund, tax fund, post FY '22.
Trustee Kelly, if you recall, at the, at the last meeting, we discussed how we, that the utilities funds balanced very nicely. They have their own revenue sources, but that the general fund is not. And so we talked about a one-time usage of motor fuel tax funds until we can come up with other revenues to properly fund the general fund. And we talked about the 1% sales tax. And that's, that's what we, as staff, would recommend, that the village finds other funds to properly fund the general fund, and that we do not continue to use the motor fuel tax for salaries. So I believe that's a direct answer to your question.
Okay, so this is only for this fiscal year, not a go-forward plan, and we have to figure out revenue sources or other cuts, or whatever we have to do for the budget to balance the general fund?
For next year, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
There is another component of that, in the fact that this is a per capita amount that we receive from the state. So this has, it is adjusted for our census change starting in the month of December. So in fiscal year '23, we will have a real census number, not a Lori guess. And we will use the IML estimate based on that real census number, and we'll have that for 12 full months versus just four months here.
So our motor fuel tax revenue will go up, but we still don't plan to use this purpose for street salaries, certainly not a half a million if we can, if we can afford not to. Otherwise, we'll just have to cut entirely out of our capital line of gas costs.
Any additional questions?
I just asked if we could charge more at the gas pump.
So?
That's what the local sales tax.
All right, the next fund is the special service area detention maintenance fund.
Oh, our favorite.
Our favorite, right? So you'll see that the revenue and expenses this fiscal year are coming in as planned, with the exception of some burning that was done, or sorry, not burning, some selected clearing that was done in SSA number 10, and also in SSA number seven. What did you say? So that's what we're looking at for this fiscal year. We, we saw those two expenses for the selected clearing in our accounts payable at the last board meeting. And then for fiscal year '22, we have adjusted the levies based on needs up to a maximum of 5% increase. So that is reflected in the revenue for fiscal year '22. And then salaries and benefits are up a little bit due to the change in minimum wage. We do anticipate hiring again a summer seasonal worker to do mowing. And I believe our college student will be returning to us for year number three, so he will be an experienced mower. And then we also use Garrett oversees the SSA mowing, and $11 of his salary is paid for out of the SSA fund as well. So that's included in personnel services. And then down at the bottom, we have got the expenses in that were planned based on our levy documents. If you recall, we had clearing, burning, herbicide applications all included in there. So they're either in the actual SSA line item, or some common expenses that will get spread out based on time allocations are down in the SSA expense line item at the very bottom. Any questions with respect to SSAs? All right, now we're going to go on to the capital funds. First capital fund that we're going to discuss is the equipment replacement fund. This fund is funded by the general fund when there are surpluses available to transfer. So at the present time, it has a fund balance of $115,000. The last expenditure out of this fund was to purchase the bucket truck, if you recall. That was a non-budgeted item a couple of years ago. When Mr. O'Shea retired, we purchased his bucket truck. That in combination, we had no expenditures out of that fund since that time, so there's just interest income recorded in this fiscal year. And then for fiscal year '22, we're looking at a transfer from the water sewer capital improvement fund of $30,000, which will help bring the balance to a positive, expecting to implement our software. There's a typo in here. It should say ERP software upgrade fiscal year '22, not '21, at a cost of $140,000. Any questions?
Do you have a timeline of when that's going to start?
Probably not until about the third quarter of this year, maybe fourth quarter, probably fourth quarter. Any questions?
Leave go.
All right, the next fund is the capital improvement fund, whoops. This also was funded from general fund surpluses. And we, at one time, years ago, there was a road and bridge transfer into this kind of cool the monies together, if you will, for a road project. But in fiscal year '21, we have interest income, no expenses. In fiscal year '22, we project spending $27,000 on construction, which would include the installation of the clock during the streetscape project. And also, if we get it done in fiscal year '22, we would include the sign, the electronic sign to be placed down in Henpeck Park out of this fund. Any questions? All right. The public use fund is monies derived from new home building permits. So this fiscal year to date, we're actually looking at $43,000 in revenue. I'm not sure why there's nothing in the budget for fiscal year '21, but that was the case in the budget document. We transfer money to the tip to help them pay their bond payments, and we will continue to do that in fiscal year '22. And also, we have contractual services there of $69,000 that will fund the street garage project, which will be discussed in detail in the capital improvement plan. Any questions about public use? The water sewer-
Sorry, quick question on that. If you scroll up, public use impact fees, does that not take into account the potential of the new project? Are we not thinking that'll kick off the next fiscal year? Or is the 39,000 including Oakstead?
It does not include any new homes in Oakstead in fiscal year '22.
We don't expect them to pull any permits until spring of '22.
Yeah, they won't be ready.
Gotcha, okay.
All right, the water sewer improvement fund is monies that are collected on your utility bills. We expect revenue this year of $33,000 and change. And we pay the bond payments for the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act bonds that were issued out of this fund directly, and then also transfer monies to the water and sewer fund. We actually had budgeted a transfer to the general fund out of this fund to help it balance in fiscal year '21. However, we don't, I will not be transferring those should our results end the way we thought, think they'll end based on not spending this fiscal year due to the COVID-19 virus. Next year, we're looking at revenue of $344,000. That's the result of bringing new homes online. And then we have several transfers that are reflected out of this fund for various capital improvement funds. $140,000 to the water operating fund, which will include capital expenditures for things such as surge suppression. And then the sewer operating fund has also some surge suppression that we're going to fund for that. The equipment replacement fund, the $30,000 that we just talked about for our ERP thing. And then when we get to it, I will show you Fund 37, which is coming up soon. That fund has a negative fund balance. It all gets rolled up into the water sewer fund. So I'd like to transfer from this fund to that fund and make that inactive. And then also a transfer of $26,279 to do the water main replacement at Warner and 72. Any questions with this one?
See, the interest and principal that's listed there, is that saying that that, that means that that's paid off, correct?
Correct, that bond, the last payment was made in December.
Okay, and when this, when these fees were originally instituted years ago, there was first a $10 fee and then a second $10, right? I think we're at 20 total per home?
Correct.
Was it, was it originally passed as an intent to pay off that debt and the improvements to the water treatment facility? Or what was the original intent of this fee?
Yes, it was to build capital improvement dollars and to pay off the bonds.
So do we foresee that this is a fee then that will not go away, and we're just going to keep charging it, even though that bond is now going to be paid off?
Yes, we expect to find other capital improvements, very high priority capital improvements to use those funds for.
It's like the tollway that we drive on is temporary.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the Capital Projects Fund is a capital improvement fund that has a fund balance of $113,000. We have no activity in this fund. You'll recall that we used to transfer from the various funds and make bond payments out of this fund. That became a little confusing for everybody, so you asked me to stop doing that and record the payments in the fund in which they were to be expended. So there's no activity in this fund. However, to use the fund balance up, I proposed that we do the $80,000 estimated street light wiring that's going to be required in the streetscape project. And also expend $60,000 for that water main replacement. You'll see down here at the bottom, there is the negative $26,000 in expenses, meaning a positive transfer in to bring this fund to a zero balance, and then we'll leave it inactive going forward until we have a use for it.
Lori, for, for that 80K on street, State Street improvements for the streetscape improvement?
Yes.
It was my understanding that the entire streetscape project is coming out of the grant that we, or not grant, but that, that, that amount of money, the million dollars plus, that we have to spend before a certain period of time. And that there was, we weren't paying like out of our actual budget, operating budget for it, but that it would come out of that monies. Are we showing an income of 80,000 to offset this expense?
Trustee Kelly, I'll address that. If you called during streetscape, we, the total, the total request came in around almost $1.7 million from what PRI designed for us. So several committee meetings and the board meeting, we cut that back to the, to just, I think $1,300 is the total fund. This is, this is completely independent of that, the $80,000 is. This is a contract that was done 10 years ago, that apparently has some pretty poor workmanship. And this, while, while we have the street torn up and while we're working on streetscape, this would be the correct time to repair that. So this is over and above what we have for streetscape, but it's required electrical repairs.
Okay, so it's technically not a part of streetscape. We're just going to do the work while the streetscape is going up because of the ability to get to it.
Correct, and we'll, we'll change that terminology in the margin there. That's a little incorrect, and the, the amount might be also a little high.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah.
Sure.
One question I got, maybe Jeff, you can answer. When the wiring was done, and it was done, I don't know if you call it shoddy, but not the best, didn't EEI oversee that? They would have to come up with a decision. Okay, just keep that in mind, because we've got pond problems from EEI. We got a pipe back pitched, a big pipe back pitched EEI. We got electrical thing EEI. Let's keep that in mind.
Duly noted.
Thank you, Ms. Clay.
Okay, Fund 35 is our next fund. This fund was created at the time the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act bond was secured. And this fund was used to actually record all of the transactions for that project. So it actually ended up with a negative $115,700 balance. And as I mentioned in the CIP, I would like to transfer the 115 to bring this fund balance to zero and inactivate this fund. Any questions? The next fund is the transportation policy fund. This, this fund receives money for transportation impact fees based on new homes being built in the village. It looks like this year will end with about nearly $100,000 in impact fees. And we, the only construction that we incurred this year was $248, which was a residual from Briar Hill Road in the amount of $248 paid to ESI, the engineer that oversaw, oversaw the construction on that project. This current, or next year for fiscal year '22, I'm estimating $89,980 in receipts for that. And then expenditures of $45,800, which you saw in the general fund at this time last week, to pay for the down payment on the sweeper. Any questions? The early warning fund is a fund where we're collecting monies on new home permits also for the early warning sirens, the weather-related sirens. And unfortunately, on the Crown Development land, we are not collecting those fees. So we have had no revenue and no expenses incurred. We do have a fund balance of $6,885 for capital improvements to the sirens we have, or any new sirens that would be constructed in the future. for capital improvements to the sirens we have or any new sirens that would be constructed in the future.
Lori, what do you mean by unfortunately? Does that mean we should be collecting?
Um, that was part of the annexation agreement and it's not, they, they are not paying for those fees.
So, and which development is this? I'm sorry?
Um, on all the Crown developments. So that would be Prairie Ridge, Thames Farm, and the Oakstead, Oakstead.
Current, on the current Crown Development, in the current annexation agreement, they should be paying for this and they haven't paid for it?
Trustee Kelly, let me please interject. This was a development agreement, annexation development agreement that applied to all three subdivisions that was negotiated by the village board back in oh-five. And that's what you'll be acting on in two weeks. We'll be amending that again. And those fees were not, those fees were not included in that agreement. So no, they should not be paying those fees.
Okay, so it wasn't like there was a fee added to that agreement and they haven't been paying it. They just weren't in the agreement that was originally approved.
In fact, as, as we've talked about.
Yeah.
Yes, we did.
There are five sirens.
Uh, those, those fees were negotiated then. And as you've been hearing for the last several weeks, they're being negotiated again right now.
No, no, I, I understand. It, it, I, thank you for the clarification. I just wanted to make sure this wasn't a case that they were in the annexation agreement. They should have been paying and they weren't. It sounds like the village negotiated at the time and they weren't included in the annexation agreement as a part of those negotiations.
Right. And obviously we don't have a major need for sirens either because we haven't spent the seven thousand dollars that we have.
Then I thought we had an issue with sirens that we had to fix something this year, or was that, am I wrong on that? Was that a different system we had an issue?
So each year we do routine maintenance to sirens, which comes out of the general fund. Um, the only capital need that we may have is one of the boxes, a couple of years ago was reported to be rusting. Uh, but then last year, I think they painted it, which inhibited the rust from growing or whatever. And didn't even come up on the list last year. So, um, that's the only capital thing that, you know, is kind of an ongoing thing that may require replacement. Any additional questions on that?
Moving on.
Moving on. Um, Fund Seventy is a capital improvement fund. It was, it was actually established for two different purposes. The first was to record all of the expenses of the TIP bond. You know, the proceeds were deposited here and then the expenditures incurred out of this fund. And then the second reason for that was to record the revenue that the village received from the letter of credit from Tuscany Woods. So the seventy-nine thousand dollars, I'm undergoing a reconciliation. I think it actually, we might be able to transfer some money for other expenditures on the Tuscany Woods project. But the remaining fund balance is related to improvements that we, that should and could be done in the Tuscany Woods development that the, the developer, you know, failed to do and we got the letter of credit and, um, you know, can, can be done in the future. So I know the street department would like to rewire the street light that's at the entrance at Ramkey and Seventy-two. And I believe that that would be very good use of these funds. As well as we're reviewing whether or not, we're having some failures in the water line, supply lines in that subdivision that are being absorbed by the water fund at this time that we may be able to charge to this, this capital improvement fund as well.
They're getting no pressure, right?
Um, no, it's not a no pressure situation. Um, the copper piping is in, it's going through a PVC sleeve. So it goes from main through a sleeve to the resident's home and the, the copper is.
Chemically reacting with, with the skeletonized sleeve.
Yeah, and it's causing the copper to fail. So we've had to replace a couple of those and we're just laying the copper in the ground and it's fine. So being in those sleeves is, has been a little problematic.
So the copper inside a galvanized sleeve?
Yeah, I think it's, it's in PVC, isn't it?
No, I think it's, I think it's skeletonized.
Oh, okay.
The two metals are, are conflicting with each other.
And they, and they're doing it for water?
Keep in mind, that's an EEI issue. You're right. It all happened when the, uh, we agreed to reduce the size of lots. And the water services, obviously, B-boxes were there as the main adjustments, but they didn't make the rate adjustments.
All right, so that concludes our capital improvement funds. I'm going to zip through these agency funds. Fund Thirty-three is, or excuse me, Forty-five, Forty-three. Forty-three, Forty-five. Is SSA number fourteen. We record all the property tax revenue, the bond payments and the administrative expenses here. It looks like we have, I did not put fund balance on here because we treat this as an agency fund. We do not carry this balance on the books of the village. We do record the revenue in and the expenses out. And this one bond was refunded, we will recall, just a couple of years ago. And they have some pre-funding, so therefore it looks like they're losing money when actually they're expending some funds in their reserve accounts that were set aside for the pre-funding of the bond payments. Uh, the next one is, I think, I think that's Fund Thirty-three rather than Forty-five. My apologies, yeah, Forty-three. I have a Forty-five up there at the top. Forty-five is SSA number thirteen for Tuscany Woods. This again just records the property taxes in and the various dispersments out for debt service and administrative expenses. We have, we budgeted for the impact fees that we collect on behalf of the other taxing districts in the village. So this shows impact fees and transition fees in. Crown is, all lots being developed at the present time are Crown-owned or formerly owned lots. So under their annexation agreement and they provided land in lieu of impact fees for the schools. So that's why you see no impact fees being collected and transition fees in and out of this account as well as the interest. So net, net zero, we're gonna show that here. Uh, if, for the library, they are collecting both impact and transition. We're collecting impact and transition fees on new homes. So again, no impact to the village. So we're net zero there. Park impact fees, Crown Development also did contribute land in lieu of park impact fees. So we're collecting only transition fees at the present time. Uh, they're both in and out, so net zero there. Fire Protection received a partial credit for land that was contributed. So we are collecting some impact fees, but not the, the full load there and transition fees. So in and out in fiscal year twenty-two, that impact zero. Uh, the cemetery impact fund. Again, no transition fees for the cemetery. We're showing an in and an out there. Net impact zero.
Why aren't we collecting money for the cemetery?
Um.
We collect all the impact fees.
It's a thing.
It's okay. There, we're like, you know, I had like, what, what was the news story last week? Like eight thousand units of government, cemetery boards are one of them?
Yes. Yeah.
I couldn't hear the question. What was the question from trustee Coth?
Why aren't we collecting money for the cemetery?
Ah, okay, thank you.
And then we're creating a new fund. We're always about like collapsing and getting rid of funds. However, we are going to establish a new fund for the township, township impact fees. Others are actually transition fees rather than impact fees. Um, but we don't expect to be collecting any of those in fiscal year twenty-two. That will start up with the Oakstead developments in fiscal year twenty-three. So that is my presentation for the evening.
Lori, to, to trustee Coth's question, is it a state statute that the village be a custodian for transition and impact fees for other governmental bodies? Or is that a village ordinance or decision?
That is a village decision.
So if the village wanted to, we could change it to say, while we own the annexation agreements and the development agreements and we negotiate, like Mr. Hedges is negotiating with Crown right now, what the fees are that upon execution of that, the fees are to be paid directly to those governmental bodies rather than pass through the village. Is that? So that would be up to the village to decide if that were the appropriate procedure. Is that correct?
That's accurate.
Okay, thank you.
If we continue to proceed the way we are, are we allowed to charge the various bodies that we give money to? Any kind of, any kind of a fee for?
It's not written into the agreements that we have with them currently.
What benefit is it for us to be the custodian then?
Uh, it's a benefit to them because we collect it upon permitting. Um, and it's a benefit to the builders. It's a builder-friendly thing, um, in that they write one check to the village. They will, they write two checks to the village, one for the permit fees and one for the impact and transition fees. And then we divvy it up.
So we can't charge any administrative fees?
We could. It's just isn't in the agreement that the board has passed all these years. So yes, it could be done.
We should do that.
You just approved it for the, for the township just about two months ago.
Yeah, because we have to reconcile each account, Lori, or Mary, or Terry now.
Terry, yeah.
That's a considerable amount of time.
Yeah.
Because every check that comes in, if we're doing fifty-five permits a year, that's fifty-five, a hundred and ten checks basically that have to be then broken out to each fund. So it's not out of line to charge an administrative fee for doing these accounts.
I think it's, let, let's look, let me look into that, see if we can do that. Because first it's permitted and then what it would take to amend all the, 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 um, intergovernmental agreements. But it's not a, it's a good, it's a good point because we spent a lot of time on this. We charge SSAs administrative.
Yes.
We do charge the SSAs administrative fees, so that'd be somewhat similar. Ready for the cap?
I'm ready.
Bring it on. Let me just give you a brief introduction, uh, the board when we, my interviews fifteen months ago. And since then, we've talked a lot about capital, capital improvement funds. Uh, Josh and I have been working with the water and sewer department as well as streets, as well as fire department and all of the buildings. What you're about to see is just a brief overview. What I said, what Josh said earlier is the full first three-year plan. Uh, there's five pieces to this plan. There's the three-year uh, capital improvements plan that you're going to see from Josh. Then there's a bond issue that we're proposing. And then there's a bucket of everything that didn't fit into the, to those four pieces. So with that, I'm going to let Josh do a brief overview of the program. And then if you'd like to talk about any of the specific expenditures, maybe the public works the building, we can talk about that specifically. Josh, fire away.
Okay, so what's going to be in the presentation is just an introduction, CIP, what it is, what its purpose is, uh, then the planning and approval process, spending summary, a slightly deeper dive into fiscal year twenty-two's projects and then a summary with some special notes at the end that we can discuss if you'd like. Uh, so the capital improvement plan, the purpose is to facilitate more long-term thinking rather than just trying to figure out what the expenditure could be each year during annual budget cycle. Uh, it, it forces and allows the departments to prioritize and the village board to prioritize what projects should be done further out. So this is a plan. It's not policy. These expenditures do all have to be wrapped up into an annual budget each year, just like you saw with a lot of the funds that Lori went through. Uh, and this gets updated annually. So that gives flexibility to, uh, change depending on if priorities change. Trucks break down, whatever the case may be, the plan can change each year and it's updated accordingly. Uh, so the planning and approval process, first we identify and prioritize, prioritize needs with all the departments uh, in consultation with, with engineering. And that totaled thirty-six million dollars in needs. And that's just for the costs that we know of. There's plenty of projects that we don't have a cost for because it would take money to find those costs. Uh, so thirty-six million dollars is the, is the entire bucket of needs. After evaluating financial constraints, we've come to about a three-point-four million dollar three-year plan. So that's the money that will actually get spent in the three years that this planning moves forward. Uh, so the step that we're in right now is the red arrow. It's the committee feedback and ultimately board approval of this plan. Again, it's not policy. It can't change depending on how priorities change. Uh, so what you'll see there in the last box is that the first year has one point six million dollars. Uh, the second year, eight hundred and ninety thousand, and the third year, eight hundred and forty-three. Uh, and that's also shown here. Uh, the first, this is a three-year spending. The first chart depicts the expenditures by category. Uh, so infrastructure is, is the largest. It's about a third of the plan. Uh, utilities, plant and equipment would be the pumps and the lift station equipment and all that type of thing that, that it takes to run the infrastructure on the water super side. Uh, then there's vehicles. That's the village's entire fleets from police squads to snowplows to anything else. Uh, streets plant and equipment, again, some of their equipment, like an asphalt hopper. Uh, for example, buildings, uh, right now in plan is just two buildings in the three-year plan, uh, which is the new street site and some village hall improvements to keep us, to keep village hall useful for, for the next few years. Uh, there is a larger plan that is in the actual booklet at the very end, appendix B is the building sub-plan, I called it. Uh, and that kind of details a longer-term plan for village hall and the police department as well. And then there's police plant and equipment, uh, which is really just one expenditure that you'll see later. Uh, so then at the bottom, I just want to note that there, there is debt service of some of this. Obviously, we take ones out for vehicles. Um, so, and, and the building, the new street side building will obviously be paid for a longer term than three years. So there's one point two, sixty-two million dollars in, uh, longer-term obligations for this plan. So now we're getting into FY twenty-two projects and I'll just briefly go through these unless you want to talk about something in particular. Uh, but the infrastructure total for FY twenty-two is eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand. There's four projects. They were all included in, in the annual budget funds that Lori presented. Uh, the intersection improvements at Seventy-two and State. Julie Lane repaving, that's just a roadway project. Uh, Duchess Lane is in there. That's roadway and sewer. Uh, the parking lots are not in here right now because that's just a, a recent development that we'll have to discuss further. And it may not even be eligible for the funds that, that Lori was talking about earlier. And then the water main replacement, uh, at Seventy-two near Warner, so near Casey's. Next is the vehicles. Uh, in the book right now is this new street sweeper. The current street sweeper has, uh, had several cracks and desperately needs to be replaced.
It was out today.
I, I will tell you the true story. Dave was sweeping Jefferson slash White Oak and the broom fell off. He had to go down the street, turn around to, to get it, to take it back to the shop, put it back on.
So also included in this plan for the streets department is a gator and that will help them opposite of outsourced spring and house some of the services like pond spraying, things like that. They can maneuver around those ponds easier with a smaller, smaller vehicle, a gator. Also is a half-ton truck for the utilities department to accompany the new head count. Um, and then there's three police squads currently in the budget, all intended to be four explorers and all replacing vehicles that are over a hundred thousand miles. Uh, the building's listed, like I said before, is the new street site, which in the first year is about sixty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars. Uh, and then village hall improvements of about thirty thousand dollars to do things like bring the windows uh, and, and the self-leasing wall up to a condition that would make this building useful for the next few years until the police department lease runs out. Uh, the streets plant and equipment list includes the downtown street lights that we discussed that will, are planned to take place during streetscape. A new salt bin with pad to replace the two current deteriorating salt bins uh, over at the streets department site, uh, at the new site, of course. Uh, the new village sign, Headbeck Park, and the village clock installation during streetscape. Totally a hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in the first year of the plan. Uh, utilities plant and equipment, Lori mentioned surge suppression. So TBSS is, is the highest cost there. That's at nine different locations, including five lift stations, a couple of pressure-reducing station valves. Those are fifteen thousand dollars a piece, I believe, if I do that math right in my head. Uh, there's also forty lift station pumps, a valve exerciser uh, was proposed to outsource that service for twenty-eight thousand dollars, a, a one-time service. Uh, so buying our own valve exerciser and the software you company will pay for itself in two cycles of the service. Uh, a well set of media exchange is included. Uh, without that, the treatment process cannot take place. Water just won't be drinkable. Uh, and then the mandated risk and resilience report and emergency plan. Uh, just the completion of that. Totally two hundred and ninety-one thousand five hundred dollars. And lastly, the single item on the police plant and equipment is to, uh, transition uh, the police department's radio systems to match King County's new system. We have to do that or else we won't be able to talk back and forth with King County. And that is just as a result of them deciding to switch over.
Thanks.
And they use government money. And they use government money.
Thanks for that.
So here's the summary. Uh, in order to keep this short, I didn't list out every single project for the, the entire plan. But here's the summary. As you can see, uh, the first year does have a lot more spending. That's especially true because of the infrastructure projects. We're addressing some of those very high priorities, uh, right away. And if there's, if there's any other questions about that or we can move on to the two special notes that I made about the streets department site and the infrastructure on.
One point, one point six two million paid over how long?
The building, uh, the new street site, I believe in this plan was. Yes.
The public works garage. Yes, right, right now we're, uh, we, I sent a letter to Stanley today proposing, um, a thirty-year note that he would carry. Uh, we've talked about this briefly, but, uh, the, the village cannot mortgage a building. Uh, so that we can buy it from a private individual as long as it's not used as collateral. Um, so we're just starting the discussions of the specifics as of today. I sent him a, a non-voting proposal, uh, starting at thirty years at two point two eight percent, which is the, the thirty-year treasury right now. Uh, that would be tax-exempt interest income for him. So there's some benefit to him for that. Um, you'll see in your, in the, um, details of the capital plan, the other book, that, uh, the costs right now are estimated to be close to one point eight million. Uh, Stanley has donated the five, plans to donate the five acres of land. And, uh, we, we expect, and also guarantee that the price will not exceed one point five million. So he, he may be eating anywhere from two fifty to three hundred thousand, discounting us that much. In addition to that, uh, we have the old, old, um, street department property appraised, appraised for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we're, we will be attempting to sell that. If we can sell that for somewhere, if we can sell it at eighty percent of two fifty, then that's permitted. Otherwise it would have to go to auction. So if we can sell that before, have somebody to buy it, uh, October first is when we're proposing occupancy of the new building this year, um, then that would also write down a, a total overall cost. So it's, the answer to your question is right now it's at thirty years and that's just the first, first volley. That'll be negotiated.
Okay.
I, I do have pictures of the layers if you'd like to see them.
Yeah, this is a, this is a picture of the layout of the building. And, uh, David, well, Toby and David met with us this afternoon. We'll go into details about it, but this is everything that Dave wanted and needs. And, uh, it's, it's a really nice package for us. Took a long time to develop and come up with the, uh, so proposal, but I think it's a really good solution. This is probably the single biggest in decision that you'll make on this, in this year's budget.
They got showers?
They have to.
Oh.
Uh, just so, I don't know if Jay's even aware of this. Uh, United States Department of Ag, if you're using any chemicals, they have to provide you a shower and a facility to change clothes. Because of the chemicals that get, we get on your clothes. They actually give you a direction sheet of how to wash your clothing proper and then how to clean the washing machine after you wash for the next person.
This will also be a concrete, uh, building, either, uh, masonry block or, or tilt-up masonry. So be, um, probably, that's probably a couple hundred thousand dollar cost right there compared to Polmar. So I think that's, that's really all we had planned for tonight. If there's any specifics about the capital plan, uh, please take your time and go through that. It was just the presentation tonight because you now have a copy of the full plan. Uh, it's not perfect. I'd like you to think about that sort of as you would a, a, um, comprehensive plan. It's a long-term plan, uh, that is our guideline for the budget every year. Um, and every, in the current year, those things, items will be in your operating budget.
Did you email us this too?
Yes.
Okay.
So I want to thank Josh and, uh, and all of our department members, really Lori and, and Brian and especially Mark and Dave for all of the input so that we can finally provide you with the first, uh, capital plan. I think the village has had it quite a long time.
Very nice job.
Great job.
I'm impressed. Very nice.
Yeah, much better than anything we've seen to this point. So it's really good eye to the future and with some planning.
And Ryan, does that lose, you don't lose your real and trail budget, so?
I will in about six weeks.
Where do we go from here?
You want to make a recommendation or you didn't really do it?
Any other questions, comments? Aaron, Ryan?
Not really.
Nope.
Motion to make a recommendation?
Entertain.
Second.
Second, third, fifth, whatever.
Right.
Like entertain a motion?
You already had first and second.
Got it.
Quick, I thought we had you broken on that.
Keep repeating it. You don't have to. I'm not embarrassed. I don't know procedure very well. Uh, are we good enough with that motion? First and second, any other discussion?
You have to make sure with the, uh, the motions to approve.
Yes. They do.
Recommend, recommend.
Okay, let me just spell out the, the motion. Entertaining a motion to recommend to the village board that we move forward with the fiscal year twenty-two budget as proposed and the capital budget.
Which is included.
Included in that as proposed. That was my entertain motion. So Ryan, you're firsting. Aaron, you're seconding.
Yep.
Any further comments or questions?
And you're gonna have a roll call, look, please.
Just making some notes. Uh, Krajewski?
Yes.
Kelly?
Aye.
Klein?
Oh, three K's.
Aye. Motion pass three zero. Any other announcements? Make a motion to adjourn. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, second.
And you do need a roll call, please.
Krajewski?
Aye.
Lally?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Motion pass ma, uh, here.
Thank you all very much.